I'd like to call the regular meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission of May 8th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Fire evacuation, in case of a fire, there's two ways to exit the chambers. Your doors behind you are to your right, my left, through the exit doors, go down the stairs and a safe distance from the building. Roll call. Mr. Secretary?
Yes, Terrence Lynch?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
There.
John Petronella is here. Frank Alamo?
Here.
Joseph Muley?
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Here.
Vinnie Grillo?
Yeah.
Christian D'Antonio?
Here.
Walter Crizell?
Here.
And Rob Anderson?
Here.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for the April 24th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion for the April 30th special workshop meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Any questions, corrections, concerns? No, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We did have a town attorney report. It's online, you didn't get in your packet. We don't have a zoning enforcement officer at this time. Anyone in the audience who'd like to come and speak before Planning and Zoning on anything that is not on the agenda? Anyone would like to speak? Anything that is not on the agenda? Third time, I'm closing public participation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move new business, item 12A and B.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move that motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll also entertain a motion to move new public hearing, A and B, right after new business.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, new business. Ms. Secretary?
Excuse me. CGS 8-24 CIP presentation.
Okay.
This is Donal News, Director Public Works. So we're talking, we're going to talk about CIP. So why am I really here? It's a...
We're trying to figure that out ourselves.
Well, I am going to, I'm going to provide you with some lovely answers. As part of the, Part 1 of the Charter, Chapter 6, under Finance and Taxation, under the duties of the town manager, it states, "As part of the annual budget that the manager asks to submit a separate report attached thereto shall present a program previously considered and acted upon by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the provisions of the general statutes." So it is in the Charter that you folks have to approve the town manager's and/or town council's CIP budget for the year. Otherwise than that, we cannot have the budget. So...
Whoa, no.
I hope that answered, I hope that answered your question, so...
We always had to do it.
Yeah, you always had to do it, but that's actually why it said it's in the Charter. It's kind of an odd thing for me, but again, we have to do this, so... And again, what's a CIP? It's Capital Improvement Plan. It's individual capital projects, purchases, equipment purchases, studies and the like. There's a budget part of it and a, and a program part of it, but it really serves as a blueprint for sustaining and improving infield's infrastructure, and it coordinates everything together from financial planning, capacity, strategic development and the like, and it really stands at the center of what DPW does and also finance. So I am going to talk about, again, what was deliberated the other night. So professional engineering services, where you, this is an area where we use for anything that comes up from engineering studies, architectural things that we need. We are going to be doing some work at school, miscellaneous school facilities that takes care of everything, anything that kind of pops up as an emergency. We will be replacing one boiler at Memorial, since it is down and needs replacement. We are going to be doing ACM abatement and also the mandatory HVAC inspection, which is an unfunded mandate from the state. So the high school has aged in. Next year, it's going to be JFK, then the next year is going to be a couple of elementary schools after that. We will be working on also miscellaneous town facilities similar to the school facilities and our boiler water treatment program, which is helping to extend the life of these boilers, which some of them are over eighty-something years old right now. Miscellaneous sports field upgrades. We will be, the, a bright spot is we're replacing the poured-in-place rubber playground surfacing at Alcorn, which is in desperate need of replacement. We're also going to be doing the Alcorn gym floor, the entire, the entire floor. Eagle Academy walks will be all replaced in the front, and we're going to be getting some equipment, like some scrubbers, a ballpark groomer and synthetic turf brush to help maintain infield high schools, new field. Also, as part of CIP, we have a contribution to the roads program. Typically, it's $500,000, but we use, Finance Department uses LoCIP funding, which is Local Capital Improvement, Local Transportation Travel Improvement Plan. But this year, we went from 308,000 last year, that now the town share is going to be 440, so we got a significant rise in LoCIP funds, so we're going to only have to contribute 60,000. Crack ceiling program, which really has extended the life of our roadways tremendously. We have another robust program at 65,000, and our storm sewer pipe relining, we'd use that instead of replacement anywhere that we can, similar to what we did for the sewer project that, on 920 Enfield Street. The police are, will be purchasing 110 radios, and also EMS will be purchasing 22 radios as part of that. Now, another part of capital is WPC, and that is completely separated, separate and funded through WPC revenue itself and has nothing to do with the town side. So we have some general miscellaneous pump stations, the Simon Road lift station is in desperate need of replacement. The other, the other two, next to the Roads 2021 sewer work is for, when we are doing Roads 2021 projects and we need to replace the sewers, we use this funding to help, to help offset that cost. Clarifier blades, those are the, if you happen to drive down to Parsons Road, those are the rubber blades that kind of skim the top off of the, of the clarify, of the final clarifiers and the like. Those need to be replaced already. We already had to replace one last week, and there's multiple ones that we need to do already because the plant, that upgrade's already been three years old. Enfield Terrace, to handle the new 26 more units and the like, we have to rebuild the pump down there. Now, cute little name for muffin monsters at Greatbrook, South River, Simon Road, at North Maple. If you don't know what a muffin monster is, it is basically a set of, if you call it saw blades, that are set like this, and they just spin at high speed and chop up everything that goes through the system. Case in point, we had a, if you remember, Seinfeld, when George Costanza had a puffy coat, the down-filled black coat, we had somebody flush a puffy coat and it made it all the way down to the plant and bound up the one down at the plant. So, so those need to be replaced. The lightning mixer is, mixes up our grease so we can deal with it, and the next, the six-inch Godwin is a, is a pump that can handle about 2 million gallons per day for pumping. Our CMOM is regulatory requirements, that's capacity management, operations and maintenance of the whole plant and the system, and also the collection systems. So they have a very robust program this year, $2.8 million for WPC. And with that, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I'm making your night easy, then. Okay. Okay. No?
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve CGS 8-24 referral for the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Okay. And any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes. Linda DeGray?
Yes.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Ken Holinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
You can go home and have an early night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. When you're ready, Ms. Secretary?
Yes. SPR number 1954, 100 High Street, application for change of use from church to theater, Opera House Players, applicant owner, MAP 25, lot 131, TD 5 Zone.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't seem that the applicant is here. I'm hoping that she'll show up within the meeting hour, if you want to...
Okay. Then we can table this until she shows up and just give me a...
Or just keep it?
Yeah.
Where it was? Yeah, table it because you moved it.
Right. All right. Okay. Then we'll move on to PH 3122.
Okay. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, publicly, public hearing number 3122, 900 Enfield Street, application per section 10 dot 30 dot 2 dot B dot II and section 10 dot 30 dot 7 dot J for an internally illuminated sign. Jeremy Wakat, applicant, Fleet National Bank of Connecticut, owner, MAP 26, lot 13, TD 5 Zone.
Okay. Welcome. Name and address, please.
Jeremy Wakat, Arco Signs, for 900 Enfield Street.
Turn the mic on. Yes, there you go. Now say it again, please.
All right. Good evening. Jeremy Wakat, Arco Signs, here for 900 Enfield Street, the Bank of America. We're seeking to add a sign on the canopy and have it internally illuminated. It's a small sign, only 24 square feet. I believe it's a nine-and-a-half inch letter with a one-foot-six-inch logo, so it's part of their upgrades to the bank. They're painting it, making it look nice, and they're looking to add that sign on the canopy.
Okay. Staff?
Good evening, everybody. So the applicant summed up the application, special use permit for a internally illuminated sign, otherwise known as a type C sign. This includes various modifications to their existing signage. New illuminated signage will be included for the existing bank over at 900 Enfield Street. The parcel is within the Enfield King Street Overlay District, also known as the gateway to the north in the community. So section 8.60 of the King Street, Enfield Street Design Overlay District comes into play for signage. I did not see any violations of those sections with the applicant's proposal for the sign. I've copied and pasted the sections that correspond with this type of application for your review. I've had no other departmental comments about the application. Everything online has been satisfied. The original application, the original sign application was denied by the zoning officer because it didn't conform to the regulations, so the applicant, and the way the regulations are written, in a sense, is actually appealing that determination to the board in hopes that the PZC waives those requirements for the illumination and canopy. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions?
I had a question.
Ken?
On, we have your presentation here?
Yes.
On page seven, okay? I just had a question about the sign. It says Bank of America.
Sure.
It's, it's across the whole thing. Is it, is it your intent to put that sign at, at the, the drive-through area?
Yes.
So that's going to be, but that's, that's not the lit part, right?
Excuse me?
Is that, is that lit?
That's the lit part, yes.
Oh, that's the lit part?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? John? You also?
Just clarification. On all these other signs that you have on your, on your site overview sheet, you got EXT number 1 through 14A. Many of those signs, some of those are referred to, they say remove, not in scope, and then the other ones that say, they might say, like a do not enter sign, directional, and so forth. Those are not part of this application, correct? From what I understand, is, or not? Because, because they're, why? Because they're directional?
So the directional signage, I believe, is proposed within. I didn't have any concerns from the zoning officer or anything about the directional signage, or from the traffic authority.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, just make it clear as to what exactly we're looking at, because, you know, there is, there is a lot of other, you know, small signage and so forth, but I know it's all directional and incidental.
Yep. I believe right now, there's a lack of directional signage on site, and that was the whole intent.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Everybody else? All set? And this is a public hearing, so I do have to open it up to the public. Anyone in the public like to speak for or against this application? Anyone? Anyone? Not seeing anyone? I entertain a motion to close.
Madam Chairman, move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
To close?
Yeah, to close.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Ken Holinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay. Any conversation? None? Okay. I will entertain a motion for PH 3122.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH number 3122 for changes to the signage at 900 Enfield Street, per section 10.30 point 2 point B point II and section 8.60 point E and section 10.30 point 7, with the conditions listed.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Ken Holinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay. You're all set. Thank you. When you're ready, Ms. Secretary?
Yep. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing number 3123, 15 Salerno Drive, application for special use permit to allow accessory apartment Samantha and David Parker, applicant owner, MAP 103, lot 80, R44 Zone.
Okay. Hi. Name and address, please.
Samantha Parker, 15 Salerno Drive, in Enfield.
Okay. Tell us why you're here. You're on TV.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here for a special use permit to add an accessory apartment to our home at 15 Salerno Drive. It will be used for the care of my elderly parents. It's going to be one bedroom, one bathroom, a small kitchen and living area attached to the main home through the mudroom.
Okay. Staff?
So this is a pretty straightforward special apartment request for an in-law apartment, otherwise known in our regulations as a accessory apartment. The property does meet proper lot acreage of 1.24 acres. It is serviced by well and septic. The applicant did receive a favorable report from the Health Department for having the in-law have septic and well, so they're all set there. The applicant has intended to comply with all sections throughout their documentation that they submitted for your review. Every departmental comment online has been satisfied. There were no issues or concerns. I did do a little site inspection, and I met the applicants there, and everything seemed like it was looking good. Everything looked in compliance, and they are ready for you to make action tonight if you choose to do so. The other thing is, the applicant is requesting a waiver of a site plan per section 9.10. Point 2. C. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Yes, I have one question. On department comments under building, it says needs to, needs to be maintained as a single-family structure. I thought that kind of goes without saying.
It's, it's pro forma. It's just something to keep in mind because, so we have an affidavit that the accessory in-law special use permit applicants have to sign stating that the in-law apartment will not be converted or used as a two-family, and we've had that issue before. So that's where the affidavit comes from, and the building official just helps us keep that.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Crizell?
So I'm assuming the existing garage is staying, you're just adding another, another stall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the way I'm reading it. Okay. That's it?
Commissioner Grillo? You all set?
No issues at all. Thank you.
We're not putting the pool back?
We are.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Good for elderly and white aerobics.
Okay. You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm good. I have no comment.
Rob? You all set?
The only question I have, because I read the Health District's memo, was the septic system. It's currently for a three-bedroom, and now there are a five-bedroom. How's that kind of, I would, it's, it's just undersized, and that is a concern for me, seeing it's on septic.
Right. I would have imagined they would have said something. They completed their review online as well, and I did email them separately just to confirm. And I did get a response back that both of them, Brian Bellowick and Wesley Roy, who switched septic roles, were okay with it. They didn't have any concerns.
Okay. All right. That was, that was my only question, because reading that kind of...
Excuse me, Madam Chair. In looking at the site plan, I think they're adding, they're expanding the septic system. That's what it looks like to me. That's what I'm, that's what I'm reading. I could be wrong, but are you...
We're not, we're not expanding it at this time, but we do have a quote from a company and a plan in the event, in the hopeful and likely event that the septic does let go. We have a plan and a quote in place, ready to put a new septic tank in, and there's plenty of space on the property to move the septic and meet all requirements.
Because, you know, again, I just say, on this site plan that you submitted, it says replace with a 1,500-gallon, five-bedroom, and it's referring to the, to the septic tank. It says existing is a 1,250 gallons, and it does say replace with 1,500 gallon for a five-bedroom, so... And you're saying that you're not going to replace it?
My understanding was that we didn't have to, as long as we had a plan, in the event that it does fail.
For, for future, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. We're all set? All set? Okay. I do have a public hearing. I do have to open it up to, thank you for reminding me. Anyone in the public like to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing, PH 3123.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes, Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion, Ms. Secretary.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. First, we're going to do the waiver first, but there's a motion to approve a waiver of a site plan per section 9.10. Point 2. C.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay.
And next, we will, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3123, 15 Salerno Drive, application for special use permit to allow an accessory apartment, Samantha and David Parker, applicant owner, MAP 103, lot 80, R44 Zone.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes. Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
All right. You're all set, and invite us when you put the pool back. Okay. Is...
Yes, the applicant is here.
Okay. We're going to go back to SPR 1954. The applicant has shown up. SPR...
Okay. Yes. SPR number 1954, 100 High Street, application for change of use from church to theater, Opera House Players, applicant owner, MAP 25, lot 131, TD 5 Zone.
Okay. Name and address, please, and the reason you're here.
My name is Amanda Tewitt, and I'm here as president of the office.
Okay. Tell me what's going on.
We have changed the use from a church to a theater.
All right. Staff?
So this has been long overdue. Finally have a moment to help them get their special use application in. 100 High Street is also known as 96 High Street. It's a unique piece of property, since it's a through lot and a corner lot with no rear yard lines. The building was constructed in 1948. This application does not include any exterior changes. The site has existing sidewalks, minor landscape, mostly landscapes due to the size of the property, and a small parking lot in the rear of the building. Other parking alternatives were explored in 2018 and discussed under the parcel history section, where public parking spaces were identified west of the site, and Melina's Plaza slash St. Patrick's was identified as additional parking as well. There are two existing small dumpsters in the rear parking lot, which might need to be relocated a couple of feet due to section 8.133. be relocated a couple of feet due to section 8.133. There is also a large storage container occupying between six to seven parking spaces, which will have to be discussed with the commission for its location and duration. The applicants also rent a unit out of 215 Moody Road for additional storage of their equipment. A site visit was performed on April 28 by me, where a storage container in the two dumpsters were observed. The storage container requires approval via site plan with the commission, where a duration and location should be specified. That could be included tonight if the applicant would like to do so. The dumpsters might need a couple of feet, might need to be moved a couple of feet over as they appear within the front yard setback on McCon Avenue. There is an existing sign for the Opera House Players, as well as a clothing donation bin in the rear of the building. So the sections that come into play for this one are section 8.130 landscaping standards, number six. I did pull the original site plan just to verify what was already approved for landscaping, and everything is the exact same, since the church was approved way back when. So I did not see any additional trees that were once approved that are now gone. Everything is the exact same. The other thing is, is section 8.133 for garbage and recycling receptibles. The two dumpsters within the front yard setback on McCon Ave. I did try to do a little bit of math on the GIS. It seems the one on the southern parking aisle is, the location is okay with the property land measurement. It is outside of the 10-foot setback, but it's the one on the northern island that's about six feet in. So if they just move it four feet over or by the back door, that should take care of that requirement. So you'd be approving a waiver of a site plan per section 9.10.2. C. A motion to approve a storage container per section 3.30.14.2. E. For a duration of X amount of days, to be decided between the applicant and the commission. And I had no other departmental concerns. The applicant does not wish to do a permanent liquor approval right now. The events are, as the events come with liquor, they will come in for their temporary liquor permit still. And that is all I have.
Okay. Question is, why is there a storage container, and how long do you need it there?
It can be temporary, and it is because we were paying our rates.
Okay, temporary. Give me a timeline.
I would ask the commission when they would like it removed.
Well, normally 30 days, so I'm. I'm just asking, because I don't know what you have in it, and I don't know what your need is. That's why I'm asking for a little input from you.
I really don't have any.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have questions? Oh. Turn your mic on, sorry. All right. So you have no additional needs of past 30 days. Okay. Okay. Anybody else have a question?
This was the senior center way, way back.
It was also a church, and it was also social services back.
So it was never changed after the church left?
Hey, you're just as surprised as I am.
Well, there was a valley reparatory company in there.
Yeah.
After that.
Yeah.
And now there's a new theater group in there.
So we're just correcting something that was oversighted for X amount of years?
Right.
Okay. Just going down memory lane.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Secretary? When you're ready? It's not a public hearing. It's just a site plan. It's okay. Good you're catching me. Good you're catching me.
I'm just trying to keep you on the straight and narrow.
Yeah, the first motion is for the waiver. I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of an A2-T2 site plan per section 9.10.2. C.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alimo?
Four.
Kenneth Talinski?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four. And the container, I'd like to make a motion to approve a storage container per section 3.30.14.ii.e. for the duration of 30 days.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alimo?
Four.
Kenneth Talinski?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four. And I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number 1954, 100 High Street, application for a change of use from place of worship to theater. Opera House Players, applicants owners, map 25, lot 131, TD 5 zone.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Frank Alimo?
Four.
Kenneth Talinski?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
And you are currently now a real theater.
Very much. We're going to throw a party. Should I turn this off?
Let us know when you're having your first play.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Okay. All right. You ready, Mr. Secretary?
We are going to. Continued public hearings, right?
Continued public hearings.
Yes. Yes, XZA number 25-02, application for text amendment to change section 5.60 special requirements for the special development district, town of Enfield applicant, STD zone.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. Staff?
Thank you, and greetings. I have basically just kind of a rundown of where we're at with this proposed special development district, which I will, from here on, say STD, because it's just faster, based on some, what seemed to be some apparent confusion at the last meeting. I just kind of, this will help to clarify things, I hope. So basically, the special development district is a rezone application that requires a master plan for approval. Subsequent to the approval of the master plan, the site is required for the actual development of the site which requires fully engineered plans. I'm sorry, a site plan is required for the actual development of the site which requires fully engineered plans. Currently, the zoning regulations include an STD section. It is designed for adaptive reuse of properties with vacant or dilapidated structures. It requires a master plan followed by a specific engineered plan. The current application for a modified STD is sponsored by the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission. It was realized that as we work on our update of the zoning regulations, there are many potential projects that could utilize a more modernized STD with more flexible adaptive reuse, such as a mass mutual, remember the soccer fields? Felician Sisters, Enfield Square Mall, and Nathan Hale School, to name a few. The need was apparent and could be imminent, so we decided to move forward on our own. Our consultant, Don Poland with Gorman &amp; York, wrote the proposed STD regulation in January for the town with all of this in mind. Staff, our consultant, and ultimately the PZC discussed the concept and wording. Vacated or dilapidated properties with at least five acres that need rehabilitation, redevelopment, or adaptive reuse may apply for the STD. This does not include all properties with five acres or more. The property must qualify for the STD. Through a public hearing process for a rezone, the STD's master plan essentially becomes its own zone with details including permitted uses, bulk and area requirements, maximum housing density, parking, and impervious coverage, as all other zones include. The master plan essentially dictates the criteria by which all developments within the zone on the approved rezone may develop. If the proposal does not meet the criteria, or the planning and zoning commission finds that the plan or proposed uses are unsuited for the location, they can deny the application for the rezone. The Plan of Conservation and Development calls out the Enfield Square Mall as a targeted investment area with the recommendation to use a master plan approach, and that you can find that on page 81 of our current POCD. Because of the POCD recommendation, the developers of the mall are interested in this regulation and are appropriately commenting during the public hearing. They have proposed that it accommodate different scenarios for development. Their suggestion for wording, in case the applicant is not the developer, and requirement, excuse me, requirements for the need to modify the site or master plan are welcome and logical. Aside from these procedural suggestions, written as paragraph 5.60.3F and G, the only proposed substantial change to the regulation is changing the need for review of the master plan requirements or site plan approval change to 20%, where the town of Enfield had proposed 10%.
I know the developers.
Yes, Dina Postelares is on the teams, and we have Evan Seaman representing the applicant. I'm sorry. Thank you. Representing Woodsonia. Sorry. Slipped the tongue.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, Evan Seaman, Land use lawyer at Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford. And going to keep this brief, but here tonight, on behalf of Woodsonia, support these regulations as modified, ask that the commission approve them, and look forward to moving forward with the potential redevelopment of the Enfield Mall in the near future. Happy to answer any questions, but that's all I have right now. Thank you. Thanks.
Madam Chair, do you want me to just go quickly through what the current amendments are? So. So from the April 24 meeting, staff has modified the proposed wording, essentially eliminating much, much that was of concern. Changes are from section 5.60.1. A4. It basically is now kept as originally drafted by the town. There are no proposed revisions to this section, except for the fact that we added the wording type and maximum density to the residential references. Section 5.60.3D, we changed the expiration times as follows. Five years until expiration, plus up to five years of extension time, and under extenuating circumstances, up to five years of additional extension time at one-year increments. And I would just like to remind everybody that a site plan statutorily has five years until expiration and may have an upward, up to five years of extension time. So it's essentially following the statutes. Section 5.60.3E, we changed the threshold for a modification to the master plan from the requested 30% down to 20%. And section 5.60.3G, we basically just reworded that for simplification.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anne Marie? Please.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Anne Marie Geldenzi, 1330 Enfield Street. I hope you're all doing well tonight. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm also, didn't see all these updates, so I'm going to have some. Some of my sentences are. I have read through the special development district proposal and has been, that has been provided by Gorman &amp; York and updated by the applicant. I have some comments and suggestions that I would like the council to please consider. I do think it's great to hear of the redevelopment of the area known as the Enfield Mall, or now we refer to it as the marketplace, and I'm very interested in seeing it completed for what is best for the town of Enfield. I lived in, I have lived in Enfield most of my life, and I like the way it has always presented a suburban-style living, with mostly a residential community. Although this STD is mostly suitable for the marketplace proposal, my belief is this STD is not appropriate for all of Enfield. We need to be aware in reviewing any proposed STD that will affect all of Enfield and not just the project at hand. Allowing different styles and types of complexes for either apartments or businesses and business spaces in other zones that's not suited for this type of development approaches on the existing communities. This special development district opens up the potential area that are currently not available to a high-density development, which could affect and cause issues like traffic, strain on public services, town services, education system, and its resources and emergency services. We need our zoning regulations to protect these communities that already exist and their property values. The residential, for example, the residential zone I live in, I live in because it is not a high retail or high-business area, and has minimal high-density buildings. It is a neighborhood filling with, filled, filled with single homes and multifamily housing, churches, schools, and very few businesses with some apartments. If this STD is approved as is, it would open up many residential-type communities to have buildings that do not fit or will change the existing neighborhood, such as selling a school, or a church property, or even opening farming zoning areas. My suggestion to this STD is as follows. In the section 560, the STD I would like to see be just for business, business regional zones, BR zones. In the first sentence, I would like to change the purpose of the, that first sentence that describes the purpose of the special district, and just add in this section that it says that development sites and vacant buildings in a business regional shopping district, that's the full name of the BR zone, and exclude everything else that's said, because that says it's only accept, except in I-2 zones. In section 561, line four, the master plan also could be changed, changed as needed, and needs to be as detailed as possible. It should include all items as written in the January 31, 2025 draft, modified on March 20, 2025. 560.3, line D, the last sentence, I think it should read, "An extension totaling an additional 60 months needs to be requested by the applicant and approved by the PZ council." In section 560.3E, I do feel allowing conditions under 30% or now 20% for substantial changes to the proposed instruction or master plan is too lenient and should be around 10%, as it was in the original STD by Gorman &amp; York. These types of changes could and would affect demand on local utilities like power, sewer, emergency personnel and services, increasing impervious land, which would affect drainage, and some town services. In section 560.3F, line F, the same for this line item as in E. Any changes to the use or construction would increase in size the purpose of the building by more than 30%. I would change that to 10, too. This is critical, as it could overwrite the height restrictions in a residential zone, or it could affect watershed areas for draining, as an example. I have worked very hard in the past few years to protect residential zones in Enfield from being overpopulated and drastically changed. Please consider my suggestions, especially having this proposal for business regional zones only. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Just to answer one of your questions about taking out language, it was put back in on this new draft. Okay. Pat Talarida?
Good evening, everyone. Is that on? Yeah, I can hear myself. Patrick Talarida, 11 Pearl Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm also chairman of the Thompsonville Fire District. Let me first start by thanking all of you for your volunteer services. You put in a lot of work, and it's greatly appreciated, everything that you do for this community and what you're doing here tonight, so thank you for that. I'm here to speak tonight. I didn't read the STD. I probably never will. That's for you guys to read and figure out the details associated with that. That's why you get the big paychecks. I'm here on two fronts. Number one, from the Thompsonville Fire District perspective, with regards to the development of the old Enfield Square. It has been a drain on our budgets now for the last few years. Last night, I signed a check for just about $100,000 that had to go back to the owner because of an agreement that was reached between the town of Enfield and the owner of the Enfield Square at this point, for monies that needed to be returned, because it was devalued and was taken to court. So every year, from the Thompsonville Fire District perspective, the property is reduced in value. And what that causes for the rest of the district is that the rest of the district and the district residents and the businesses within the district have to pick up every dollar we lose from there in order to continue the services. We also, from a fire district perspective, are concerned about an abandoned building, because let's face it, most of that square is abandoned at this point. So that also concerns us as well. Let me change my hat now and go to a resident of this community. And I have been a resident of this community my entire life, and I have participated in it as well. Like many of you up there, we can remember the heyday of the Enfield Square, and it was great to have something like that. Although it did take away from other parts of the community, it did offer something else for us. We are well past that heyday. And that building, that structure, is a eyesore, not only for this community, but for the state of Connecticut, as you come in through the north through 91. It is underutilized. I think it is a blight on our society, and I have seen it deteriorate repeatedly and lose more and more value, but sightly on value as well for this community. Something needs to happen with that, and fortunately, we have a developer that's looking to do something with that property at this time. The state and our state representatives have worked tirelessly to get funding from the state of Connecticut to help with this property, to develop it. And the largest sum of money from the funding that was developed by the state of Connecticut for this was attributed to that piece of property. for this, was attributed to that piece of property. That is a okay from the state of Connecticut. That is, Enfield, you're moving in the right direction. Enfield, you're doing something positive, not only for your own community, but you're doing something positive for the state of Connecticut, and we should accept that gratefully. You have an opportunity here tonight, to move this forward. If I was a developer, and, Enfield had a reputation. I will say that reputation is changing gratefully. It's changing within the state. I, I move around the state of Connecticut. I have been in many communities, and I've talked to many developers, and many business people. And Enfield, for years, had a terrible reputation of dealing with businesses, and dealing with developers. That's changing fortunately. I think it's changing a lot, because of the good work that the Town Planning Office does. I think what the council has done, and what you have done, to make it more professional. And you have to have vision. You have to see what they're trying to do, and sometimes, you have to take a leap of faith, a little bit of a leap of faith, and move in the right direction. Is everything, you know, I, I think we could probably poll a lot of people, but you could see, there's not a lot of, I was here last night for the mayor's meeting. The room was packed. Here tonight, not so many people. But this has a real effect on this community, what happens with that piece of property. It has, not only revenue-wise, but I think quality-of-life-wise, it has a real impression on this community. And so, we need to recognize what you have an ability to do here tonight, and move this forward. And I think if you don't move it in the right direction, then I'm not sure when the other opportunity is going to be knocking on the door. I'm not sure that, I think we could be sitting here 10, 15 years from now, looking at that building, continue to deteriorate, and be a scorn on this community, on the entrance to the state, as well. So I plead with you, to, to do the right thing, to make an effort to move this project forward, so that we can get something. It may not be everything that we want, but you don't always get everything you want in, in things like this. We got to seize the opportunity, and I really encourage you to do that. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Karen, come on down.
Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street, Enfield. Speaking on my own personal comments. I don't like these new proposals. I agreed last week with, even though it was hard to figure out what you were talking about, because the documents weren't online, it was hard to figure out what was going on. But after reading the new proposal, the final document here, and I don't know if this final is the final one you have, or if you have another version yet, but the one that was online today, that said "final," is the one I'm commenting on. So, in the very first section, 5.6.0, it talks about existing, let's see, where is the word? Existing commercial development sites. So, does that include grandfathered sites that don't meet today's existing zoning regulations? There are plenty of grandfathered sites in town, some in residential areas. What exactly is existing commercial development sites? Is there a definition? Are we talking shopping centers, or a single residence that's been burned down and has five acres of land, right next to a whole bunch of other houses? Would town parcels be included in this? For example, the Building and Grounds Facility on Prospect Street? Or what about some of the school properties? If we consolidate the schools, we're going to be selling off the schools. So Haslem Memorial, Fermi, Prudence Crandall, or Stowe School, they all have more than five acres. So is somebody going to come in, you know, and want to redo all those properties, and, and not meet the zoning regulations in that neighborhood? And stick those residents with stuff they don't really want to see? What about "enable the rehabilitation, redevelopment, or adaptive reuse of commercial development sites and vacant buildings in all zones, including residential zones, except I-2 zones, and heavy industrial uses in the industrial zones?" Will this be used on vacant or contaminated property? Particularly if an old building foundation still exists on the property? Does that qualify? You know, there's, a lot of times when, say, a building burns down, the foundation is still there, so it may be considered a existing commercial development site that was abandoned. Or, or will there be another text change down the road that says, oh, any vacant property can be, can be done? When the SDD is applied to a parcel or parcels of land, the underlying zoning designation remains intact, and existing properties are not required to utilize, and that's a typo there, by the way. It says SSD designation, and related provisions and requirements unless specifically stated. Wouldn't the existing properties only be added to an SDD to meet possibly a required acreage? If they already meet existing zoning, why include them in an SDD? If they're not going to be touched? You know, I don't understand why any existing property needs to be specifically called out. I'm thinking the structures in the SDD should only be the ones that are going to be rehabilitated, redeveloped, or adaptive reuse, or of the site, or vacant buildings within the zone. What zoning regulations will apply to these zones, once it happens? Are you just dropping everything, or, you know, I don't see anywhere in this text change where residential or commercial has to conform to existing regulations, for residential, commercial, business districts, or otherwise. So are you ready to give up all that control? I certainly hope not. How many parcels will qualify for this? Has any impact on existing parcels been done? Could this apply to all the commercial plazas in town? Raffia Plaza? Shoprite Plaza? There's no criteria as to how long a building needs to be vacant. One month? Two months? Oh, we can't rent it. It's vacant. We got to do an SDD. I think there's got to be some kind of criteria. This is not a very thought-out text change, and I hope that you deny this change. Also, how will these, these regulations, once changed, affect the existing SDD properties that are in town? Will they no longer be in compliance? Are they going to have to come back and do something different, when they want to change something? I don't know. And if it does apply to vacant parcels, there's more than 154 vacant five-acre parcels in town. And, and that doesn't include something like the mall, that's being broken up into smaller pieces. My feeling is, they should come in, for that parcel that they want to create, it doesn't have to be a special zone, it can fit into the regulations that it currently exist, and, and they should comply like everybody else. We've given them a lot of money, the town, the state, and everybody else has given them a lot of ideas on how they can do it. We've given up a lot of money to do this, and they need to appreciate that, and comply with our existing zoning regs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay. Laurie, do you want to address any of this?
I will try. The first speaker, Anne Marie. You had a lot of questions. Some of the, the comments that you made, we've, we've gone back to the original wording. That you're concerned that it opens the area to high-density development. Well, it will, it certainly might. It depends on what the master plan is. All of the criteria for development will be determined by what is proposed for the master plan. The master plan will have the maximum amount of, of density of housing, if that's proposed. It will have the maximum amount of coverage of parking. And, and the underlying development cannot exceed that, and that's why we have the, the ability to go back and modify the special permit, SDD, master plan, if they want to do higher-density development, or higher maximums. The change purpose of an ad in development sites, and vacant sites. So you would like to have it destined to the BR district. However, there's a lot of different zones that this could qualify in, and it does currently. And maybe, and this does clarify that it can be used for residential development, redevelopment. 561, line four, that has not been changed. The 30% you said is too lenient, and we kind of thought the same, and, but we thought 10% was kind of minimal. So that's why we kind of landed on 20%. Well, that's the current proposal. It's still up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to decide what's going to be approved. And again, we changed the 30% down to 20, instead of 10%. So, right now, any site plan modification is permitted for staff to modify, provided it doesn't change the landscaping, or the parking configuration, or a minor, minor parking configuration, it doesn't change the access points. We don't have a percent that we have right now, but if it doesn't change these certain things, we, we have the right to approve it in-house. So, this is really, so, this, this is really geared towards adaptive reuse of, essentially, sites that have been developed, and, such as Mass Mutual, or, or the mall. I mean, this isn't going to be any site, just because it's vacant, and we can't build on it, or we can't find a buyer, or whatever. There's got to be a reason for it, and the, the commission has the right to approve or deny the master plan, based on what is proposed. If it's not something that is, they feel is, is a good fit for the area, they can deny the master plan. So, thank you, Pat Tellerita. I guess he left.
Yeah.
He's, he's, he said it all, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, if, if we do nothing, it's going to be very hard to develop the mall site and other sites, and they will continue to just sit there and go, and just deteriorate. And nobody's going to come in and change that. We're very lucky that there's interest in having that done. And Karen? Grandfathered SDD sites? Yes. They're grandfathered. They, they have the approval of what they, they came in with. The Bigelow Commons is an SDD. So yes, they, they will just remain as-is. You know, can schools be part of it? Maybe. That is a possibility. Nathan Hill is, is a deteriorating site. You know, that, I mean, and it's got, in need of remediation, and things of that. So do you want to just see that site sit there and do nothing, and deteriorate? Or do you want it to be, have some sort of an adaptive reuse? A burnt-down house, I do not think would qualify. And again, the zoning will be dictated by the master plan. It is not that there will not be zoning. It will just be modified for the site, and it will probably be based on what most of our other zoning is. What, what this does do is allow for adaptation of the uses, and the, the height, size, location, and parking requirements. Anything, as far as parking, anything that is, that is going to be an adaptive reuse will require an OSTA approval, and that's the state requirement. So they will be overseeing any traffic. So if, if the traffic report comes back that it's going to be higher than the previous use, that's probably not going to fly. So, those are kind of my quick comments.
Okay. I do want to say that the SDD has been used for Blair Manor, also, and the Hazardville School on Hazard Ave. And so, I do know that we've used them. I have this, this thought that just occurred to me, and, and I'm just talking for me. Is there a way, and I don't know, because that could be considered spot zoning, that we do something just for the mall area, and then continue to work on the SDD? I'm just throwing something out, and seeing what sticks. I'm just talking at this moment. So that the mall area can be redeveloped, because it's in dire straits, and it is a eyesore, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Tellerita on that. It's just a thought, and that's, that's all I got to say right at the moment, and so. Go ahead, Mr.
The slash through the F. The letter F is slashed out.
That must have been a typo.
Okay. So the F is, F is still, okay.
Still, okay.
Just a clarification.
Okay. Ben?
I have to agree with you. And with that question you just asked, is there a way that we can make that one area to these regulations, and not every, and do it as they come in? If we had to change them, instead of just throwing out, yeah, everything at this? Once again, I'm, I'm with Madam Chair. I'm just asking that same question. I was thinking the same thing.
Okay. Joe?
I think a lot of people have had their fingers in this, and I think it's come along quite a ways, but there's a line in here, number five, on where she, it says, "This does not include all properties of five acres. The property must qualify." In essence, it has to come before us. If it's a good idea, then we talk about it. If it's a bad idea, we say bye-bye. So I mean, I think it's a step in the right direction for the town, and looking ahead, you know, to the future. I think it's great the way it is.
Fine.
I'm fine the way it's proposed.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, I'm pretty much fine the way it's proposed. There's questions, and your question about, can we do it just for the mall, and all that? I think if we don't have something that people can, can come in and say, "I'd like to develop this piece," if we don't have something that they can look at to see, then you're not going to get people to look at it. Because they're going to say, oh, it's zoned residential, it's zoned agriculture, it's zoned whatever. There's got to be a way that we can try to keep all of these zones that we have in town that are non-compliant, because of the way we rezoned after things were done. We have to have a way to say, okay, here's the zone you can use, and here's what you have to do. And that way, we have, as a town, with the planning department, with ourselves, with whoever else looks at it, we have the right, then, to say, okay, we like this in this area, or we don't. And I think, I think what we've done here, and with the work that our staff and the developer have put into it, I think is in pretty good shape. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the revised plan, as it, as it stands tonight. I think it gives us some flexibility in approval for STDs. As Commissioner Mulley pointed out, we have to approve the SDD anyway, when it comes before us, no matter what it is. So we have control over it, pretty much exclusively. So, and I, I think it's a good idea to allow the flexibility within the plan, to consider some of the other properties that we talked about tonight. I mean, you know, we've got a lot of blighted properties in town, and, and some of them are old schools, that were schools 25 years ago, like Brainerd Road out there, a lot of them, Brainerd Road. So, so I like the plan, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Tom?
I don't have any questions for the applicant at this time, but I may comment after the close of public hearing.
Okay. Christian?
I like the, I like the, the plan as is. I think it's, I think it's a good balance. I mean, I think there's some concern from the public about it kind of being a, kind of like a handout to, to developers, which I, I don't agree with at all. I mean, if, if anything- I mean, if anything, it's really an extra hoop for developers to go through that gives us a lot of extra power. I mean, they certainly can develop in their existing zone, which I think we should, you know, be diligent about not making it too difficult for developers. But for this, we're requiring an extra couple steps for developers, because these would be coming to us with special projects that they can't develop in their existing zones. So, they're going to have to come to us with a pre-application meeting, and we can give them the nod, or, you know, the head shake, and say, "You're wasting your time here, buddy," you know? So, you know, yeah, I think it gives us a lot of power. I think it's a good balance. I mean, it's a zone change, so those are public hearings. I mean, the pre-application meeting will be, that's probably not a public meeting, a public hearing, but the public will be able to see and hear what's going on. So, I mean, I think it gives us, I think it gives the public a lot of insight into what's happening. And, yeah, it's, you know, I don't foresee it happening for every old, you know, five-acre project. It's a lot of extra work, and it would only be needed for the special circumstances where it's worth the extra effort. So, yeah, I like it as is.
Rob?
I like your idea of the square area being its own, its own zone, aside from that. But, other than that, I don't have a problem with anything.
Okay. Anyone like to speak a second time? Emery?
Emery Galdenzy, 1330 Enfield Street. Thank you for explaining some of those items for me. I appreciate it. I don't have a concern about what's happening to the mall area. I think it's a great idea, some of those, but this affects all of Enfield, is my point, and I think you all realize that. Now, I don't know if this is correct, but when I worked on something similar like this a few years ago, it was for a certain, a specific type of residency, right? So, it was for elderly. And I don't see why we can't, under our existing SDD zone, could we have a section just for this type of place or zone? Because I think there are a couple other zones in Enfield, there's a few other in Enfield that are fit under the BR zone, and that would be appropriate to do something like this for them. But I don't think it's good to affect all the different zones in Enfield with this type of SDD. Thank you.
Karen?
Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple. I just think it's very vague. So, how are you going to deny something when it doesn't say you have to have a specific amount of landscaping, or trees, or open space, or parking spaces, or anything like that? It just seems to be very vague. You know, as far as I can see for the criteria, the only thing you can basically deny it on, they're not going to come unless they have five acres. They're going to provide whatever documents you want in A, 560.1A, but when it comes to, "The burden shall be on the applicant to demonstrate to the Commission that the proposal will provide a substantial improvement to the site, town, and immediate area," how are you going to defend that in the court? If you deny it, and they take you to court, how are you going to defend that statement if that's what you deny it on? How are you going to defend that in court? We've had enough lawsuits in this town because of stupid things like this. And, you know, "The proposal exhibits compatibility with the natural features of the land, economic conditions, and the needs of the community." How do you defend that? How do you say, "We don't think it meets that criteria"? So, you know, just because somebody doesn't like where it's going to go? I don't know. I just think you're setting us up for a big problem. And I would like to see a mandatory public hearing on any of these, whether that's going to be required or not. It doesn't say anything anywhere about that. So, thank you.
I will take that, and it does say a special permit, so it is a public hearing. So.
I believe your special permit does not require a public hearing.
Yes, a special permit does. A site plan doesn't, but a special permit does.
Any rezone requires a public hearing.
Right, in any rezone.
The site plans...
Don't require a public hearing.
Don't require a public hearing.
Right, special permits require public hearings.
And does this say special permit?
Yes. It talks about special permit for the zone change, and then for everything that happens within that SDD is a special permit. Okay?
So, as long as we have a public hearing, that helps.
It's like every step of the development would be a public hearing. So, it's not just...
All right. I still don't like it. It's too vague.
Just clarifying that, yes. Go ahead.
Just, "Any rezone requires a public hearing." This rezone will include a master plan. It is the master plan where that vagueness will be defined. And if it's not defined, if the PCC does not believe that it's best, it's a good plan for the area, they can deny it. And site plan approvals also have criteria when we approve them. So, it will all be set with that master plan. So, all bulk and area, parking, everything of that nature. So, I do believe that if this was just for the mall, it could be considered spot zoning.
That's what I thought.
So.
I'm just, I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah. I understand the idea behind it, and I get it, and it would solve a lot of things moving forward, but I do believe that this is going to be a really good tool for the community to get some adaptive reuse of these properties that are going to be impossible to redevelop otherwise.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone else? Anyone? They're all set? Okay. Do you want to close the public hearing? Do you want to continue discussing this, leaving it open, gentlemen?
Madam Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alimo.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Mulley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
John Petronella is four.
Okay. Any discussion?
May have a couple, just a couple of comments. I mean, overall, I certainly support this application. I think that there's, you know, a misconception of the public of what it is that this is all about. First of all, it is only for a, just a master plan, which comes before us, which we can deny or approve, and that, you know, again, it does not include every five-acre parcel in town. I think Laurie summed up, did a nice job on, you know, rebutted a lot of the concerns and addressed everything. It's vacated or dilapidated properties, and the property must qualify for an SDD. So, it's just not every piece of property. And for it to be exclusive for just BR zones is ridiculous, because, I mean, part of this was to help revitalize Thompsonville District, and Bigelow, and so forth, and that's all really residential. And, I mean, we already have an SDD zone. This is not, this is not a new requirement. This is something that we're just kind of tweaking a little bit and modifying. And I think that the best path to move forward, to help to work with developers and to show some cooperation, you know, to help projects move along, is to, you know, approve this, these text amendments. This is a large project. No developer in their right mind would take on a project and want to submit the entire plan of, you know, the 100 acres and a development of this size, and make that investment. So, you know, we're trying to work with them, and I think that this is a good opportunity to do that. So, I certainly support this application. Thank you.
Anyone else? Walter?
Change is good. And the mall was the mall. It was, in the heyday, it was a place for everyone to meet and greet, but times have changed. We don't, do we want to, we can't live in the past. We have to, you know, move forward and let new ideas bring developers or whoever to develop the land. Like Mr. Talarida said, it's an eyesore right now, and it's up two miles down from the Mass Line. It's, change is good.
Vinnie? They're all set? Joe?
They're all set.
Frank, they're all set? Terrence?
Also?
Christian?
Just logistically, I presume staff will take care of the typo in the initial paragraph. And logistically, besides that, I know we already have existing SDD regulations there in Chapter Five, which is the business district. We've talked about this, though. This is, SDD does not, and this actually is good, because it specifies that it's not just about the business district. I think, and I'll just clarify through the chair to the staff, I think, as we're going through our overall zoning regulation rewrite, I think this comes out of the business zone, perhaps in one of the special chapters, just to decrease any future confusion. So, Chapter Five is business districts. This applies to all districts. So, for now, it's going in Chapter Five, but for the future, right, I think we're all kind of, I think hopefully we're all kind of on the same page, because we've all been confused by it before.
Yes.
Let's, we'll clarify that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Rob? They're all set? Okay. And nobody else? All right. Secretary?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number XZA02, application to adopt new special development regulations with the following findings. Number one, in adopting this regulation, the Commission has considered the Plan of Conservation and Development the POCD, and finds the amendment to be consistent with the POCD in areas such as to remove the barriers to investment, encourage and allow greater density and diversity in land uses, provide incentives to overcome the high cost of development, streamline the land use application process, and the SDD regulations will promote adaptive reuse in many of the targeted investment areas, encouraging investment in the area and the community that require specific interventions to create improvement, betterment, and to do repositioning in these areas to compete in a greater regional market. The effective date is to be published in a newspaper on Saturday, May 10, 2025, and this amendment shall be in effect May 26, 2025.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda DeGray.
Yes, with reservations.
Frank Alimo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Mulley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay. So, they're all set? Go forward. All right. Moving on. Commissioners' correspondence. Anybody? Okay, go for it.
This might be totally off the wall, but these microphones that we're using, this one is falling apart. I mean, these things are pretty gross, when you think about it. Maybe you guys could see what the town can do to maybe fix these and change them? Silly, but, I mean, it's kind of nasty.
Just a quick answer is, I believe that they're looking into it.
Well, we got to spend $3,600 each for a radio, so I don't know.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
All right, something different. We got the handout with the updated contact information for all of us.
Yes.
And I noticed on it, maybe staff was going to cover it, I noticed there's the addition of flood and erosion control board.
Oh, you guys are also that.
So...
And APA.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, APA, no. Technically, that's a separate board. So, is the flood and erosion control board, are we technically...
That is also you.
A separate board? Or are we just including that in PCC?
It's included with PCC.
Get your rubber boots on and take care of it.
Just a hat.
Shovel.
It's raining out, so we'll need you to get out there.
I've not seen that term used for us. Am I crazy?
It's very rare that we ever have an application come in for an ENS, like, certified plan. It is a existing regulation in our regs, and then we should be having some flood applications hopefully sometime this year with the development proposed on Thompsonville eventually. It's just very rare. We only have 55 flood applications in our entire flood lifeline.
And don't we have, we'll have one when they develop the mall again?
Yep.
So, yeah.
Okay. Oh, so the flood applications we get come technically through that board? Interesting.
Right.
I mean, if you think about it this way, we're at public hearing 3,100, but we only have flood applications up to number 55, so we don't get them that often.
Okay.
So, we'll have a six o'clock meeting, a 6:30 meeting, and a seven o'clock meeting.
Forget about APA.
Anything else? Okay. Director Planning Report?
It's been unusually quiet, so as far as applications, and actually, we haven't even had a lot of, like, public input, you know, people coming in. I mean, it's there, but there's not a whole lot, which is kind of weird. One good thing is Stephen Heine, our wetlands agent and assistant planner, is going to be going to CASIO next week, so he will start getting trained for CASIO, or zoning enforcement, and just overall general knowledge of planning and zoning, so that's good. I really don't have much else.
Okay. All right. No authorization for administrative approval.
Not yet.
And we have only one application to be seized?
Correct. Just for reading it to the record. PH 3124, 130 Town Farm Road, application for a special use permit to revise a liquor permit to include entertainment for a banquet facility. William D. Camarere, applicant owner, MAP 89, Lot 50, R44 Zone.
Okay. Yes.
Oh, it's grassmere? I was going to ask.
Yes.
It already was.
They want to have music on the weekends.
Isn't it already a banquet facility?
Yeah.
Their liquor permit doesn't cover all of it, so they're revising the liquor permit to include entertainment.
Okay. So, they can't have, like, a band playing. If you weren't getting married, Frank, if you and Carmy decided to renew your vows, and you wanted to have a band, they wouldn't be able to do it.
But they've been doing it for 25 years.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
They had to stop the music while they served the liquor.
And I just remembered, I haven't given you any of the dates for the workshop, so... Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought about that today. Yeah. All right. Yes. 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 I think, why don't we do that, we all bring our dates next Wednesday? It's next Wednesday, and then we can sync our calendars.
I thought it was the 21st.
I thought it was the 21st.
It's the 21st.
The 21st, not next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
That's two weeks.
Yeah. It's okay. It's okay. I'm following you. You're telling me. It's okay. It's okay. It's the 21st, and if...
We want us to see what our schedule is. We need to figure out what the name is.
Exactly.
We need to book the rooms, otherwise we won't book the rooms.
Right.
They're available today.
Okay.
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 All right.
You have to do it in two weeks.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, we're not done yet, are we?
Well...
You didn't say 17 or 18.
We don't have any unresolved issues, do we?
No.
Our opportunities? No. No executive session?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
8:31 PM.
All right.